Okay, hello, good evening and welcome to the March 24th, 2014 regularly scheduled school committee meeting. Call the meeting to order seven o'clock and I want to just state that the meeting is being both audio and videotape this evening and would ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. And we will start with a roll call, please.
Ari Ratchey, student representative.
Kathy Salati, department secretary.
Teri Oldchars, assistant superintendent for business.
Bill Fonseca.
Gordon Smith, superintendent of schools.
Gregory Thompson.
Deirdre Mayeau.
Rich Fortiero.
Elizabeth Marcia Boucher.
Thank you, and we have some minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of March 12th, 2014 regular session.
Motion made, and seconded by Mr. Fonseca. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Carries five to zero, thank you. Committee and sub-communications, yes, good start.
Thank you. Two of our Career Tech students won some awards in their respective areas. Dylan McKean won gold for automotive service technology and Donovan McKinney won bronze for screen printing. So that was really cool.
Nice to hear.
And then we have the combined B K M S and E L H S Music Inner Schools Month concert on Wednesday at seven.
Cool. Do we have the ability for screen printing in the, in the school?
I don't know.
No.
Career Tech.
Oh, the Career Tech, yeah, okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Congratulations, you'll perform as a spot tandem, the Andy Kent with the, by Song Valley School.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Phil. Okay, keeping in the theme of Career Tech, Student of the Month for the month of February, Early Education and Care, Katie Jarvis from the afternoon session. We could go Saturday, Park Present, Division Five, M A S C held a park presentation at Smith Vocational. I put the copies of PowerPoint, of the PowerPoint in everybody's mailbox. Very good discussion, it was entirely different, the discussion was entirely different than the one we heard at Minnetog.
Understand.
Still an awful lot of questions around opt-out, which is not allowed by law, all right? Spent a lot of time talking about that. Unfortunately, and quite honestly, they've got, you know, when they talk about these start dates for Park, I don't see it happening because of all the, districts aren't ready with the technology. So, as more information continues to come out, I will keep everybody updated.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Bill. Deirdre.
I don't have any subcommittee communication, so I did want to mention that the Mountain View Town Show was held on Friday and I hope that it's a great time, yeah.
That's quite good.
Yep. I have two, I just want to commend Mr. Smith and Mr. Thompson for the presentation of the select people on the SOI, approved, very well done. And secondly, Mr. Thompson and I are Thursday night at, is it the Senior Center? Six thirty for candidates tonight, there's a meet and greet from six thirty to seven ten, and at seven ten is the one contested race debate, correct?
Correct.
So, Mr. Thompson, I will be there.
Yes.
I don't have much other than, I went to the Mountain View show too, and it was very impressive, Mr. Katie did an amazing job emceeing and including the kids, and I think that it was very relaxed, the kids had a great time, and I think all the staff and the students need to be congratulated for that.
Okay, thank you. The one meeting we had last week was the tennis meeting for the tennis courts. We are sending it out for a formal bid and we'll have those back April 25th. The envelopes will be back, we'll take a look at those and go from there, okay? When we do get that, we'll bring the project in front of the committee so that you can all take a look at exactly what we'd be moving forward with that. Okay? Okay, thank you. Visitors this evening that would like to speak? None? District mid-cycle presentation.
Okay. In your package, you have a PowerPoint that looks like this. We'll present that behind us, we'll have to do some setup. We have most of the leadership team here that I'll invite up to help us go through that PowerPoint and give you an idea where the district is at this point on our district SMART goals, and then as we look at the district SMART goals, where the buildings are, because their building SMART goals are connected to the district SMART goals, there's good alignment all the way through. I'll let them get set up and we can slide out here. I'd ask you if you would, are you good? Are you all set? All set. All right. Last year, this is just a sort of a creative way to look at the SMART goals, we used it as our opening slide last year. This is a Wordle, so what it does is if you take all your goals and your action plans, the word that is most frequently used is the largest, and then they get smaller as their use becomes less and less. So throughout our district SMART goals and our action plans, develop is the word that gets used most often. It's kind of interesting, then you also have units, common, assessment, district, students, budget, all obviously big words because they're used most frequently throughout the action plan. We feel that since we're in the business of developing young minds, it's a nice way to start off the mid-cycle. Hit to the next slide. It's a quick review of what SMART goals are. Basically, it's an acronym for specific statements of what we're looking to be accomplished, items that are measurable, so how can we objectively assess that we're getting there? Attainable, yet challenging, obviously you don't want to put something up there that we have no hope of ever attaining, but we don't want to be in a situation where we know we can attain that in the month of September. Relevant, meaning that it's connected to what's going on in the district and more specifically to the students and the student needs who are in your district, and that it's timely, that we establish timelines and we look at these, and we're doing that actually right now as we look at the mid-cycle, we may need to revise some action plans, what makes more sense for the students in our district in order to continue to move them forward. And then always, even though it's not part of the official acronym, you need to make sure that every student is accounted for during their SMART goals. As we go through the SMART goals, we continue to concentrate on our tiered instruction model. Down here is what we do for all students every day in every classroom, and that's, we want to make sure that we're continuing to define this and bring as much information as we can to our instructors and our assistants who are in the classroom working with students on a daily basis. The more information we can give them explaining the students in front of them so that they can meet students where they are in their learning, better off we are and we have fewer than needs for intervention and even fewer for intensive intervention as you go up that triangle. So that brings us to SMART goal one, which if I read it to everybody, basically says, all students will receive standards-based instruction aligned with the mass curriculum frameworks, and we need to make sure that we're clear that Massachusetts took a leadership role in the development of the Common Core standards, and so we're not giving up things that Massachusetts values, we're actually adding to that and augmenting the Common Core with anything we feel needs to continue on as we move forward. So mass curriculum frameworks, that leads to 100% of ELPS students, and here's the important part in terms of students making positive gains in their learning to meet MCAS, district interim assessment, and district common assessments proficiency levels. Just quickly looking at it as we go through, this is something we started to do last year, is what were some of the main action steps and where are we? And I think Mrs. Anir is going to walk us through some of the key steps, and this is where we also have that moment, we're at the mid-cycle, and even prior to this point in the year, we started to realize as we look at this and we're aligning ourselves with the Common Core state standards that we really have to be thinking, what's the end product? What do we want students to be able to do as they move through a given subject, a given grade level, and then work our way backwards?
So, there's a lot of there, I'll paraphrase for you because you all have this ahead of time and no one wants me to read all that information, but basically the action steps most related to goal one have to do with aligning our curriculum with the Common Core standards, which is the Massachusetts frameworks. They're one in the same, except as Gordon mentioned, Massachusetts maintains some of their standards already, so we have probably like a 1 or 2% more than just the Common Core, we kept some Massachusetts specific standards. So we'll just say frameworks and we know that we mean mass plus Common Core. So a lot of work has been done with aligning the, creating the curriculum units, and then all other departments, particularly in ELA and math, but all departments are involved in that work. We used it in the beginning primarily as an avenue to begin our instruction in UBD or understanding by design, which really is a backwards model, but we wanted to provide some professional development and what that framework would look like, and when we felt like we were at a pretty good spot with that, we turned to what we should have done in the beginning, had we not been looking to use it as a professional development piece, which would be, what do we want the students to know and be able to do? In other words, what are we going to assess them on? And then everything is back mapped from that. And so we're at a good point now to begin taking a pause in some of the curriculum maps at some grade levels to really focus in on the assessment. They are doing this in tandem in a lot of departments though, so people are writing assessments and then going back and refining and cleaning and editing their curriculum units. So a lot of good work's being done. We have over 35 teachers who come together monthly or five times this year to take a full day and really work on curriculum, and then they share that back with their department. So there's, there's more than just 35 people who have input in their hands into this. So we've, we're doing pretty well with that. We, in November, had a large rollout of what common assessments are going to be in the district and kind of how to start developing those. From there, we've narrowed our focus in on how we are giving that PD and to whom, and so we are providing professional development as we go with our curriculum writers, and so each time they're at a new phase in assessment development, we bring back some professional development and then they work together on that component. So you can see that's where, four full days of PD for curriculum writers, we're on track with that, they have one more day in April, and that'll kind of finalize this year's curriculum release days and assessment writing. All of this goes towards, we also wanted to not only have these assessments in the curriculum, but then what are we doing with it? What are we doing with the results? And so the leadership team in each building and teacher teams in each building have worked to take a look at what a data review cycle might look like and how to implement that and to begin that work, and you'll hear a lot about that from the buildings as we go through the presentation. So that's some of the things we've done, we're on track for all of it, we have completed about two-thirds of the professional development this year's on this so far that we've planned, and curriculum maps and assessments are well underway, and I'll give you more information about those as we go through some of the slides.
What's the classification? What is EDWIN?
EDWIN is a, it's not an acronym, you'd think it would be, it's not, it's not a letter-for-letter acronym anyway. It is an online management system that houses curriculum, model units, you've heard us in the past talk about model units that were created by different districts, we had a team from our district who created some model units as well. The state has a repository of all those units, EDWIN houses those, we could write our own curriculum and house it there. More importantly, there's an assessment component, so we can build our assessments in this online tool, and we could, we have a couple of different avenues to give the assessment. One is we could develop it, print it out, and do like a Scantron-type test, one is we can develop it and print it out and do handwritten tests, students can take a test right on the computer that you developed, that our teachers have developed based on our curriculum, and then all of the data is easily accessible, so if I'm a teacher and I log in, I can see my students at a glance right there. So this is just a quick glimpse at some of the work that our teachers have been hard, working hard at completing over the last few years. This, this is a report run out of Atlas, which is where we're currently developing our curriculum units, and don't pay attention to where it says containing search criteria, just look at number of units. This is the number of units that are currently housed under, in Atlas, under each content area, so you can see that the key off to the side, this first chart is K to five units, and the second chart is six through 12. So you could see at some instances you have over, nearing 100 and close to 200 units in different content areas across the grade levels. So this is what they've been doing on release days over the last few years, is developing units, and then during their curriculum time, during any collaborative time that they get together as a team, they've really been working on strengthening their units, and this is just a quick graphic of how much we've developed.
This was very confusing to look at on your own, I have to say. There's other slides here that are also confusing me. So what you're saying here, is that this is just showing a number of units that have been inputted into Atlas.
Right. The number of units that are currently created and being worked on, fleshed out by content area.
And Atlas is a curriculum, it's a curriculum mapping software.
It's a mapping software, yeah.
And the units are curriculum units that teachers have made or administration have made going towards.
Teachers, all teachers. All teachers. So English Language Arts is this band right here, you can see you have almost 100 units in English Language Arts that have been created.
Can we ask Dr. Flanagan that? The same units for, yeah, there was, are different teachers putting in different units for the same course, or is it the same course as all the same units for teachers? That's what I was.
So they have, like, for example, we have two teachers working on English nine together.
It's the same unit.
Right, and so the teachers develop it, they vet it through their colleagues, they say, what do you think, guys, and tweak this, tweak that, and then that's how the work process has been going back and forth.
So if there's a multi-sectional course, there's only one unit, if you're saying Algebra One.
It's common curriculum, so everyone teaches.
Yeah, right. So all the Algebra One teachers are teaching the same curriculum.
Gotcha.
Gotcha.
Well, how come we see like such discrepancy between some of the classes or the subjects and the units? Like social studies.
As far as what do you mean? Over here in the K to five, we've got the same writers. So ELA and math, so you, it's a self-contained classroom primarily, right? So ELA, math, science, and social studies are all written by the same people. So we concentrated on math and ELA to start with, and then science and social studies will come up later. The reason social studies shows up at all is the, that curriculum, model curriculum unit that I talked about earlier, we had a team who developed a cross-curricular unit between economics and literacy, and so that's, that's why this is even showing up. But it's the same, same group of people, they have to write their entire math curriculum, same group has to write the entire literacy curriculum.
This is secondary, this department's.
Right, and then.
Same teachers doing all five.
Yeah, so we had to pace it or we'd, you know, drive them right off the bridge.
Okay.
Part of the process in writing the curriculum and the common assessments is that we always want to do a quality review, and we have different tools to help us when we're doing curriculum units. We do have a rubric, this is a sample of a checklist that the teachers use after they've developed a common assessment, they go through, this is just a quick snapshot, there's other questions in their, in their quality check, and they just recheck, have I done all of this? Is there a balance between the rigor of the items that I've written in the test? Have I covered all the standards that I identified in the blueprint, which is their opening piece before they start writing their assessment questions? And then that gets turned into the principals and signed off on the principals and then myself for approval, and then we know that that particular assessment has gone through a multi-step quality check and we're good to go. So that's just a sample, that there's reflections.
Especially the seventh statement there, being an ex-high school principal, years ago there were teachers who would ask those double meaning questions, like which ones are not, which ones are not a degree challenge or something, yeah, I like that.
It's a double negative.
Yeah, double negative.
So we've talked about ORQs, now we call them ORQs, open response questions, we're too lazy, so now we're calling them ORQs, right? Everything's an acronym in education. This is just a sample, although it says nine through 12, we wanted to show you, we have writing rubrics or writing-to-text rubrics from K to 12. On the front of that rubric that each teacher receives is this overview page, which just quickly gives you the whole reason and purpose why we're using a writing-to-text rubric, which is why we put this here. It's easy information to share and just kind of quickly look like, why are we using these prompts? How, how is this, what is this assessing? And then how are we scoring them? And then at the very bottom is, how are we then going to use this information? And so this is just a quick reflection on that. And then this is one sample of a rubric, I know you won't be able to see those words, but what we want you to take a look at are, there are four different ratings across the top, and then you have five components, four are here, one did not fit on the page again, it's just a snapshot, but they work on focus, evidence, explanation, and analysis, organization, and then conventions is the one that you don't see up on the screen. And the students get detailed feedback.
Right.
Yeah, and then we reference the Common Core standards under, under each area of the.
If this is ELA, a social studies teacher is requiring a paper.
Same rubric.
Same rubric, yeah.
Yeah, in every core, art uses this, PE is using this rubric.
And part of the emphasis on that was, we use this as a way for them to become comfortable with teaching the literacy skills and standards that are mapped out for them with the adoption of Common Core. There's a particular standard set just for science, technology, and your social science groups, so they're all responsible for literacy, and this was a way for us to work on that together.
And I can say as a parent, I've gotten my child's work from home and the teacher will include the rubrics to show and circle exactly, okay, for this he got a three or a four, and then it shows exactly where in his work, now we all know which child we're talking about. And it's really helpful because I can, I can then see that grade and say, you know what, you're right, you only deserved that grade because you didn't supply this kind of information or detail that's needed. So even as a parent, I find the rubric to be helpful when I'm doing work with my children.
That's great, lays the expectation for students too, and they know what they need to do to improve it, so it's really a tool that's used with students, it's great to hear that that's, that's happening. This is just an example of a data sheet, and we're going to let, we have, we have Met Brooke here.
I wonder if I go very slow.
So I'll, I'll start and then I'll turn it over, but.
I think you'll hear a variety of elements to this, which should make it clear.
Okay.
It's, I mean, you have three data sets, however, this is an example that we're using because it really epitomizes a lot of the work we're doing, and also brings in our use of Google Docs, it brings in a lot of the work that Eric Bauer is doing for us, and so that's why we wanted to make sure that you see this example, you understand how it's being used in the different schools, and here's some of the background that brought us to this.
So we have all these assessments and these tools that teachers are using, and, and we didn't have a good way for them to collect all this information in one spot and have these great reports to take a look at how students are doing to make instructional decisions. This is a snapshot of what one of the Google Docs looks like. So if you can picture it, if we were all a teacher in grade, let's just say grade two, we would be able to go into Google Docs and access our own sheet, and we've done that for all the grade levels, whatever assessments they're using, they're able to go in and enter their own scores. And so you see there's star, winter, spring, fall, there's ELA, it's hidden from this, but you would see math there as well depending on the grade level, and then you see open response. So you see winter open response, a fall, and then the spring. So what we can do is house all the data there, teachers can use it like this, and what's cut off is student names, obviously, so they could see how their class is doing in this type of format, or then they can, the principals work with Eric Bauer and ask for particular reports, graphs, if you will, and so they can show, this can then be manipulated into showing graphs of how the students are doing compared over time, based on these assessments. And I'll let the principals maybe talk a little bit more around the use.
Just for qualification, what, what is a good score in BAST, the higher the alphabet, higher you go in the alphabet or lower you go in the alphabet?
It's going to be based on grade level.
There's benchmarks for each grade level, for example, in kindergarten, you know, our, the benchmark at the end of the year for kindergarten is that we'd like the kids to get to D, that's proficient, first grade it's J, and second grade it's M.
So N is a good score, N is a good score.
Depending on.
Depending on. For Better Book.
M, yes. Yeah.
And N would be a good score in Better Book.
At this point. Depending on the grade level. Oh, oh, yeah, absolutely.
You said, Holly, can you give some ways that teachers are using this information? Now, as I, this is probably one of the more recent data sheets given that's got the winter on there and soon will have spring within the next probably six weeks or so, seven weeks.
Yeah, and I know there's another slide we're going to get to that we'll talk about growth, that's really powerful for the teachers, but I think the benefit of this for teachers is that when we, when Eric helped us to create this format, we have the kids' names, it's hidden, but there's, it's a SACID, right? It's a SACID number. So when we get a list, say next year, they go, our second graders go to third grade, it's really easy for him, he gets the class list, and he's able to, whatever classroom he goes to, now the teacher has the data from the previous year. And that's really helpful because when you start in reading with writing, reading workshop, you can begin your guided instruction, you know, you still assess it at the end of the year, but you can still really help them, and you can guide them with independent reading with the appropriate level texts. So it's really helpful information, especially when you don't know the kids at the beginning of the year, but the teachers just input this data, and also it's a visual for them to see the, the growth, you know?
We use it for, it's really helpful to have in one format the multiple data points, because if we look at, is a student struggling or in, in one area, perhaps they're not in other areas and they're showing what they can do in other areas, or they're struggling across the board, and where do we need to support them? So having these multiple data points in one format is really a good visual to be able to look at your, your students and see progress and, you know.
Or intervention, right?
Or intervention, and where you need to intervene and perhaps has the intervention been successful.
If I look at the stat, that's an impressive list in that everybody improved by two from this fall to winter, that's impressive. But I'm confused by the wide discrepancy of scores, I don't understand that. Is that just the student where they are right now? There's a snapshot of the student where they are right now.
And this is a typical picture of a classroom.
Right.
So there's a diverse, diverse range.
You might have students who are, like, I'm a July baby, so you have July baby going in, they've just turned, say going into kindergarten or first, second grade, they've just turned, say maybe seven, you got a child turning eight already, so they might just by virtue of having maturity you're going in, that's why I think you see some of that diversity. Now, do they use these for classrooms too, to make up rounded classrooms for the next year?
Well, we actually just started having conversations about that. It's going to be really helpful, you know, just having that data, because we do, we want balanced classrooms.
Eric, did you want to offer anything in terms of the background of how the data in Google Docs you're utilizing to do this or other charts?
Oh, can I just add one more thing? I'm sorry, Eric. The nice thing about this with Google Docs, sorry Eric, is that, so it goes to the classroom teacher, but also if you think about other service providers that help out with a child, so maybe the coach might have access to it, or the reading specialists as well, so when we share it, you know, we're all working together with the classrooms and with the children, we can share it with specific people as well. Sorry, Eric.
No, not really, I mean, everything comes out of Reddicker, I've got everything linked up to SACID, I wrote a computer program that helps me keep everything organized and create the graphs on, on demand. I would point out to say, if you're a teacher, right, and you're the third kid down, right, he's got a, he was really low in, in star, right? And then you notice, you know, there's other students who are low, and what's curious is that the BAST seems to correlate pretty well, right? Your low, low ELA, star ELA has low BAST scores, high ELA, star, has high BAST scores, so there's a certain correlation there, you start to feel good, my, I'm doing, I'm measuring BAST effectively, right? And so you might be able to then have a star score, and you don't really have time to get to BAST, but you have a good idea about what the correlation is, and so I can still develop some instruction around that. And then if, take a look at that third kid, the same third kid, the winter OR score, we have an open response score of three, pretty high, given the fact of how low he is, so something's going well. Something's going well with this student now. I'm able to look back in my classroom and say, what just happened that maybe is clicking for this kid?
Yeah, you look quite a bit from D to I.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's a huge growth.
And actually, just to, modesty aside, the opening statement that Eric just said is, he wrote a small computer program. Then before Eric was helping us move all this data and house it and get it out quickly, we didn't have the same ability to bring this to a teacher in the given year, nor send it along to teachers who will be receiving students next year. None of us were writing computer programs last year or the year before.
Is there a sheet for this for math?
You just can't see it because it's so long.
Well, that's what I mean.
But just like star ELA, we have star math, correct?
There's a sheet for math too.
And this is data that you can also use with the parent during a parent-teacher conference for their child.
Oh, yeah, they can refer to it. Yep.
Just isolate that one line. That all makes sense. This is a chart I think you were referring to.
Yeah. Yeah. So this, you can tell where our band is because we put the band at J. So this is a chart that represents a first grade classroom. So what we do after we assess in first and second grade the BASS three times a year. So we don't ever just wanna assess and move on because then it's meaningless. So what we wanna do is, we wanna get together with teachers and we wanna plan instruction. So the first part of our half day with the teachers is, we actually, and it takes them literally 10 minutes. They color in. So you see the key at the beginning? That's the beginning of the year, the level that the students are at. Now, obviously, we took off the kids' names. Those are at the bottom. You just can't see it. They're cut off. So...
Are the students arranged, not necessarily alphabetically, it's by their original scores?
Well, so here's the thing. The neat thing is that we actually, after the second round of assessment, the teachers colored it in yellow. And we actually changed it. There's a little snafu there. That one should've been colored in. But that's okay. I think when, so what we did at the meeting, Holly, Eileen, Driscoll, and myself, as the teachers were coloring it in yellow once they finished, we actually shifted and made a staircase so that this helps us to identify a few things. You can really look at growth, right? So it's not just about what level they're at. But what's significant is, you see some kids that made four, five, you know, levels of growth, which is pretty significant. You could see where kids have met proficiency. They've gone above. But it also helps us to create urgency. Okay, so here's a group of kids that I wanna make sure that we're seeing every single day real intensively. Here's a group for small group instruction. I can see a few times, but give them extensions. So it really helps us now with flexible grouping for guided instruction, you know? So it doesn't mean, because you start at the beginning of the year with this group, you're always there, but you look how different kids have grown at different rates.
So the yellow is the growth, then? Right? Yellow's the difference.
The orange was where they were at the beginning of the year. Yellow is after the second round of assessment.
Each column is a student.
Correct. Correct.
And so...
And J, the black band, is where we wanna get them to.
This is by the end of the year.
Above the black band or at the black band?
At the black band.
So J.
Correct.
Yeah.
For first grade.
We're getting there.
And then, the biggest, the biggest part of this then is what we do with this information after. So we actually, the teachers actually take a look at the assessments and they identify reading behaviors that this group of students, that they wanna work on with this group of students for guided instruction. So we've got templates for the teachers that they actually use that half day planning next steps of instruction based on the data and the analysis. Because we wanna see if what we're doing is working, right? That's really what the goal is. And then our band for second grade goes up to the N.
And so at the end of the year, green will be colored in on top of the yellow.
Correct.
Okay.
Hopefully all above the band.
Yeah.
Hopefully all above the band.
So in theory, two students have already met.
No.
Can you put the arrow about?
Oh, yes. So you've already met. Yeah, next year.
For second grade, yeah.
Oh, next year.
So if you're thinking flexible grouping, you need to be thinking about how you continue to push those students.
Well, the beauty of reading workshop is, we meet them where they're at. So that's where their guided instruction group is gonna be at that level.
Right.
So I guess the focus is on growth.
This is, again, similar to other samples that we're providing. This is just a protocol that was established at Maple Shade this year. And they've sort of revised how they're going through their look at student data. And in here, and I think in your packet, we actually spelled out the names. And then we were thinking about that. It may make sense. You may not know what positions those people hold. So we went back and revised it. And so just indicating to staff here at Maple Shade that the reading specialist, the literacy coach, school counselor, school psychologist, ELL, teacher, and coordinator are gonna be present at these data review meetings. And that they're going to help not only look at the data with the teachers, but help set up interventions. And so, I think it's a term that Mrs. Dakin's used before, all hands on deck kind of thing. Everybody's looking at the data and how do we help our students continue to move forward?
So does each building have a similar document? No, I don't mean, so way that the...
A protocol for looking at the data?
Yeah.
All the buildings have protocols that are designed for how they're meeting around data?
For this specific building? So we're just getting an example of one of the five, right?
A lot of our focus, you can tell, is on, so now what, right? So what do we do? We're not just assessing for no reason, right? So we're assessing to really drive the next step of instruction. And so what you're seeing tonight are examples of how this is playing out in all of our schools.
Yeah, I appreciate it because you see, as one school committee person, you can try to understand this on my own. I'm saying to myself, well, why am I seeing Maple Shade? What about the other buildings? So and the reason for my question, I just try to get the conformity in my mind. To understand that there is a consistency building in building, that's all.
Yep. We appreciate those questions.
So now, this actually is a tool that is taking our teachers even further. And it's something that came directly, I'll let Mrs. Dakin and Ms. Martin speak to it, is it came directly from our leadership team work with the book, Leverage Leadership. So as we've been doing that book study, part of our work has been, okay, what can we utilize in our everyday practice that will help move students forward? And so this is something that Maple Shade and Metal Brook started to look at more specifically in design for their teachers.
Yeah, and in the first chapter, it starts with data-driven instruction. And they call that the number one leverage, right? So we start with the data to inform us. So what, and I know Michael is doing it at his school. And what Holly and I did is, after the open response assessments, we scheduled teachers to come meet with us one-on-one, and we had data conferences. But we asked them to bring the student work. And the really nice thing was that the focus was, we were looking at student work. So, and originally in the book, it didn't have the first one, the first question. But in discussion, Holly and I and Michael said, we should always start with the strengths. So these are the questions that we asked the teachers. You know, what strengths were revealed in your analysis? One of the things that we found at our school, which, you know, it's K to two, the first round of assessment for the writing, I had a second grade teacher said, not one student went back to the text because we got text sets for the kids. But it's something we have to teach kids, you know, that's a skill. After this round, so we met with every single teacher, every single teacher that I met with, and I'm pretty sure it's consistent with Holly, was that the students, even in kindergarten, were referring back to the text in their response. And that is a really big shift with the Common Core, you know, text-based evidence. So we're doing it in kindergarten, which is exciting. And then the second question for teachers, what are misunderstandings are revealed in the data? What do you think students failed to reach mastery? And it was great because, you know, sometimes it's so busy with the, you know, the teacher's schedules. We're assessing and then we're teaching. But it gave us time just to sit together and to actually reflect and analyze and take a look at the data. What's the data telling us? And the insightfulness of the teachers and what they saw was outstanding, you know? And then, what will you do to help students achieve mastery? So now, what's your, you know, what's your game plan? If maybe the misunderstanding was that the students weren't giving specific details from the text, then the question is, so how are you gonna help them with that? You know, maybe it's more modeling during interactive read aloud or interactive writing. So it was really powerful. And then we have a follow-up date in about a month. So they're gonna share some of that student work based on what their focus was for instruction. Is there anything you wanted to add, Holly?
Just that it was, these were really helpful. And we kept a copy and we gave the teachers a copy of our, you know, the summary of our conferences. And it was, they don't, we don't necessarily have time to focus on the data and on the little nuances. And just like with the BASS analysis, the benchmark analysis, where do we go forward next? And helping the teachers break it down into manageable parts. You know, what are, what are the small next steps that I can do to move these children? Because when you look at the data overall, sometimes it's very overwhelming and to find a starting place. But really to help those teachers efficiently find, you know, where do they go next? And that it is manageable. So that was very, they were very helpful conferences.
And then also, how can we support you with this? So on the bottom of it, we just, we ask for PD feedback and PD ideas so we can start planning for next year, PD, how we can help, you know, with these responses.
Okay. And then as part of, actually somewhat expanded goal from last year, as we look at how this is taking place in all our classrooms across the district, the leadership team has been conducting learning walks. But this year, we invited our department heads in each of the buildings to come with us. So we have 10 scheduled. Back in August on the 22nd, we had a voluntary professional development to which I think we had most, if not all, our department heads come. And we talked about Google Docs, introduced them to that platform for collaboration, how we were gonna house in there not only department meeting agendas and minutes so people can get them no matter where they are, in the building, home. You can get to your Google Docs. And then started to discuss, what would the district learning walks look like as we start to include them? And that was something that back in August, and I would say even in September and maybe even in October, caused a little bit of anxiety. How am I going to be perceived by my colleagues? What's that gonna feel like? But now that we've actually completed seven, we have 10 scheduled, we've done seven, you don't see any of that. Actually, the department heads with the very first learning walk, all the way through our seventh learning walk have been fantastic. Not only at helping us see how certain things are implemented at the different grade levels and in different classrooms, but helping us provide valuable feedback to staff. And what we're seeing is that many of the buildings now are starting to have either full observations of colleague and colleague or sort of mini learning walks, if you will, where the teachers are getting involved. And so it's starting to expand on its own, which is pretty impressive. That takes us to Goal Two. Just quickly going through Goal Two. By June of 2015, this really concentrates on our common assessment development, which eventually will become our district determined measures. We're gonna develop them and then administer these assessments three times a year in ELA and math in grades K through five. And then our common assessments for all content areas, six through 12, will be developed and administered at set intervals throughout the year or throughout the specific course. Assessments will be used to guide all our instructional decisions and our curricular revisions. So figuring out where our students are helps us then plan for where we go to support them. Want me to go through this, or you got this?
Up to you. So this is a, there's a lot of overlap between Goal One and Goal Two. And that's on purpose. It's because they kind of go hand in hand. But primarily, you can see what's been completed up on the screen here as far as having received some initial professional development. We do provide ongoing, one-time shot is not ever what we're looking for. We want to be able to provide professional development than the opportunity to use what you've learned in that PD so that it's just a better model. So, but we have at least used this as a way for people to have a general understanding of the purpose for common assessment development. Release days, we did have curriculum release days throughout the year. Starting in November, those release days went from focusing on unit development and refinement to development of the common assessments. So that's what, we are in the middle of doing that now. And all of the buildings have provided input and in, not just input, but have developed their school-wide assessment calendars. And we're starting to collect those so we can have an overarching district calendar. So we'll make sure we're spreading things out where we need to. And then that allows for us to coordinate our assessment schedule with district release days so that we can do the type of work that you heard Miss Dakin speak about around the analysis and the planning of the next steps. There'll be a little bit more information on the next few slides. So you don't have a nice graph this time around as far as where we are with common assessments. And I'll explain a little bit of why. One, Edwin is being used. And so I did go in and we've been feverishly working with Edwin with multiple numbers of staff. And if you go in and just pull out a quick report, it looks like there's 127 different assessments developed. That is not necessarily 100% accurate because people are just getting used to the system and some of them are in, you know, spot checking how things work. So they're playing with it and then we have to delete those particular assessments later. We're using Google Docs right now. Dr. Flanagan had a great chart that she shared with me that went out to her whole staff that has every department listing their curriculum writers and then what they're doing. So you, in math, you're doing Algebra I, Algebra II, Calculus. Who's responsible for the curriculum documents? Who's responsible for writing the common assessment or district determined measure? And then just some notes on the side. That gave me a really good idea to kind of refine that a little bit more. And so I've created a Google Doc that'll go out to all of the curriculum writers at our next release day in April and ask them to first and foremost give me updates on each common assessment. So I've taken that and kind of fleshed it out a little bit more. And I have DDM or Common Assessment 1, 2, and 3. And I have a dropdown menu where they'll tell us whether it's finished, started, or not started, in progress, or finished. And so we'll have a good number on what's completed and what's not. But for now, every grade level, K to 12, has the ORQs, the open response questions. They've all administered two, at least two of them. If you're in first semester at the high school, Dr. Flanagan could talk more about whether they had courses that did two administrations or three. There, that was decisions that they made building-based. And you can see the rest there. We've talked a little bit about Edwin. Eventually, there's a learning curve with Edwin. It's not easy to start out with, for sure. But we have high hopes that once people get going with it, it's really gonna make this a little bit more easy for us to manage, for teachers to manage more so than anyone. Being able to have that data right at their discretion whenever they feel like opening it up and taking a look is gonna be really helpful for just individual planning purposes. So that's a little bit about what we're doing with common assessment.
Okay, so this gives us a look at our open response questions and growth. So you have two different assessments here. And this is by grade level at the high school, which is a little different. We're trying to...
Different chapter, yeah.
It's different, yeah. I'll explain it.
And Dr. Flanagan will give you an idea. She felt that this would be better for this presentation and probably one line.
Can't even see it.
I can't see it.
Can't read it.
Can't read it. Do we can wait till the shopper?
Is there a...
No, I, I put this in there. So, yeah, it's a snapshot of a graph.
Okay.
Is what I'm assuming, how this got in there.
I can explain it. Yeah. I first wanted to say is that this whole dip in the water with open response assessments and common assessments has really been a great learning experience for all of us. And, you know, our main goal next year is to move to more standard-based common assessments. This only tests one area, writing. And as we move more toward the Common Core and we start to develop more rigorous common assessments, I think what you're gonna be pleased to see is, as we move forward, at least at the secondary level, is that we're gonna get, similar to the data that... least at the secondary level, is that we're going to get, similar to the data that you saw at the elementary level where it's, you know, how students are progressing with each standards, you'll see that per course. So as you know, and Mr. Ficero can speak to that, every course at the high school has a different, completely different set of standards. So this is great because it shows progress on writing, but this is just a sliver of what we eventually want to be able to accomplish at the high school. I wanted to show you this because I think this is really important. This graph shows you the growth of our ninth through 12th graders in their English Language Arts class on Open Response Assessment Writing. And the reason I felt this was so important, well, first of all, I think it shows that there's been a lot of gain with our students. But what I'm most particularly proud of is our 10th graders actually had the most growth. And those are the kids that are taking the MCAS this year. So that was good to see. The 11th and 12th graders, we, you know, writing is a big, big portion of the SAT, so that's an area, kind of gives the teachers a snapshot of, you know, what they need to focus on in the English Language Arts class. The chart that you have in your packet was the combination of all open responses in all content areas, so PE, Fine Arts. And that's important, but this is a little bit more refined. And right now, our kids tend to take Open Response Writing more seriously with embedded into their English Language Arts class. So I just thought this would be a little bit more helpful.
So once again, my question, this is just one example of what's happening at all high schools.
Correct. So the blue would be the first test taking and then the red is the second.
That's red?
Yeah. Maybe it's brown. I don't know. We, and, the other color. We give the Open Response at the high school twice each semester. So we gave, this is from last semester. We just gave it for Semester One, and as we get closer to the end of semester, you'll see that. And similar to what's going on at the elementary level, we too have a data protocol sheet, we too have data meetings. One of the things I think is unique to what we're doing at the high school is we're looking at the text, having teachers analyze the text that they're sharing with the students because sometimes it's important to understand the misconceptions kids have when they're reading. So if a bunch of kids miss question 10, the conversation is why do they miss question 10? Are there words in there that might have tripped them up? That's a really big part of this whole process is really getting into the heads of our students to try to understand where those misconceptions are occurring.
So a student at the same high school will get an Open Response Common Assessment four times each year?
Actually, it would be more than that because it's embedded into every course. But I don't want that to be like, oh my gosh, we're testing. What we're asking teachers to do is make this a part of your test. So if you're giving a test on a unit, slip this in so it's not separate and apart, it's just part of what we do. And really trying to highlight that the skill of writing is in every content in every one of our classes.
Yeah, this is another snapshot, but this is coming from Burchland Park. And Dr. Allen might be able to give us the ways that they use this.
So much like you've said, Mr. Ficero, we're in the same exact process with different differences here and there. We have an analytical rubric that we fashioned after the high schools, but they have five components to theirs. And on the middle school version of scaffolding up, we have three components. So at the bottom there, you see O1. That's one class. This is an English group. So O1 is one class, and that far left is the component of focus. The component in the middle is evidence and explanation. And the component on the far right there is language and conventions. And my English department took the district and the high school's rubric, and then we sort of built from that one tailored towards middle school students. We've also come up, we've also built from the ground up analytical rubrics for science writing and for math ORQs. So on all of our different content areas, students are being scored in three different components. And without repeating things as best I can that have been said, what I think has been especially positive at Burchland as we've started this process this year, we're through two. So the first marking period, we just spent creating the rubrics. So we couldn't even really do these assessments till we had the rubrics that we were going to use. So we are now just in the final stages of completing Data Cycle Two. And so we will only get through three of these turns this year because we went slow in the beginning to build the rubrics. But what we're finding is that there's a real depth in how the teachers think, which is really important because these rubrics are, there's a lot to them. And it really causes the teachers to reflect on their practice and to reflect on how students learn. And much like Dr. Flanagan said, sort of when we go through the process, the biggest, the part where we try to pause the most is, once teachers have identified where the students are struggling, you can't move forward until the teachers identify what makes that challenging. So if they're struggling in evidence and explanation, which is what we have found often, well, why is that hard? If I'm a seventh grader in a science room, why is it hard for me to provide the right evidence and explanation? Am I having trouble reading the text? Am I being tricked by the question? Am I not understanding the content of the text and therefore I can't really explain it? So that what makes it difficult really causes teachers to look in depth at their own practice, which is great. And then the other part we're really focusing on is the planning, the reteaching. So in our data cycle, teachers actually create with their colleagues and then turn in lesson plans that show how they're going to reteach where students are having trouble. And I mean, we're just, like, like, like has been said, things are going really well, but we're really just at the tip of the iceberg for how good this can be. And I got to say, the teachers at Burchland, and I know everybody would say this also, just have really worked hard at this. It's been new. I'm new, you know, there's a lot going on, yet when we sit down for these data meetings, they engage and they look at it and they think about what's best for kids. And it's really all that's right with education, to be honest with you.
Well, at the high school, that's a very impressive slide that's going to be taken.
We didn't break it, yeah. We didn't break it. We, like Tim, we follow the rubric. So if we wanted to, we could see focus. One thing I wanted to say too that came out of this is it was an aha moment across the board, this whole idea of evidence and explanation. That is a huge weakness, I would say collectively. And so we've really been working on that. And as you know, the kids took the Park pilot today and just talking to some of the kids and they're like, you know, man, you know, we really have to start explaining things and not just on that one reading, but multiple readings. So I think the kids are starting to understand the reasoning why we are focusing on that. And hopefully we'll have some positive gains.
And this, and on ours, you can see that like on this example that's provided, like we went up like in each of these components, but we don't, like, we have so much work to do with calibration and making sure we're scoring it objectively and, you know, so, I mean, I'm happy to see this group demonstrating growth, but, you know, we're far from there as far as the scoring goes. There's a lot of work, and my teachers would admit it too, there's a lot of work we still have to do to make sure we're completely scoring these objectively. And then it's, I'll be honest with you, a really interesting moment is going to be when we take the MCAS Open Response Scores and we correlate it to those students' Open Response Scores throughout the year. I mean, that's going to kind of be the big moment is where, how is our scoring? Is it correlating with MCAS or is it not?
Before we move to Goal Three, just give up questions.
Philosophically, I guess what I'm embracing, it's a good feeling. It sounds to me, it's like we put this in very basic grandstand, no matter where the student is, no matter how we get them in the class, we're going to do whatever we can to get them where they should be. Is that what I'm hearing? Then no matter-
I think we're starting to see less and less kids slip through the cracks now because we have so much information and everyone's looking at that information.
But also, but also we're having that not only we have the data, we're also taking this data and we're making sure it's for every single student. It's very impressive.
So Goal Three has always been around our climate to make sure that you can't do your best work, whether you're staff or student, unless you're in a situation where you do feel safe and nurtured and it's respectful. So that's something that we continue to work at. Each building has a goal similar to this that's aligned with the data that they're looking at specific to their building. Just to give you an idea of where we are with this goal on a district level and then take it a little bit further into the buildings. So last year, we took a practice that was happening at some grade levels and went across the district for all of our grade levels that were exiting a building. So they were exit surveys. And for the most part, they were student exit surveys, with the exception of second grade, which was a parent exit survey. For the students, we were able to put it on Survey Monkey or Zoomrang, which I think now emerged, so it's all one and the same. And they were able to take it online. And then that gave us an idea of what our students were thinking, and we could build specific to individual schools. So the middle school could look at the eighth grade results, the high school could look at the 12th grade results, the two elementary schools could look at the fifth grade results, and Meadowbrook could look at the second grade results. And, okay, so what should we be focusing on this year? We've been working on using some of that information as well as information that we get through not only PTOs, but also school councils. We're developing a parent and family climate survey. We're hoping that we can get that out right around the April break time. One of the things we're going to be looking at this week in our leadership team meeting is a draft hopefully of this so that we can be ready to put that out and advertise it and get a good return. So that's on track. We're doing more, one of the things that came out of some of this information as well as information we're receiving from parents, we're doing more parent workshops at the building level. And those seem to be going well, and certainly the buildings can talk about that. So that's going to be, it's on track and that's going to be ongoing. We'll try to expand that and each year be able to hopefully identify some needs that people might be interested in. This year, you know, we've had some of our more traditional but focused math nights as well as just a look at Meadowbrook at Common Core and demystifying it. And then every other year, Massachusetts puts out a Tellmas survey. So two years ago, our staff took it, and this year, they just recently finished this, and we should get those results in the late spring, early summer. And so that will give us an idea. That is seven categories, and it's a staff survey. So it gives you an idea of how your building staff and your district staff are looking at leadership, distributive leadership, technology, resources, discipline, and student management, all those different categories. And we can start to look at that, share it with staff as they come back in the fall, and build our action plans. So just to give you a little bit more of a look at our student exit surveys, since this was the first time across the district for those grade levels, it gave us a baseline. So that's what we came out of the summer with, was that baseline. We looked at the results, and that was back in June as a leadership team, and then the buildings each discussed with their staff the results. From those discussions, they created action plans, and the action plans are happening this year. Mr. Fred, that's not here, but just one example, because I think some of you have already participated in. They're doing a climate building initiative where they're bringing in people around the district whom students may or may not come in contact with at different times during the year, and having those individuals introduce themselves and talk a little bit about their position. Such as I went in a couple weeks ago, introduced myself, some of the students in the classroom knew who I was. Most of the students, when we talked about snow days, knew at least one part of what I do. We're excited about that. But they also want to celebrate diversity, so they asked all of us to look at what makes me as an individual diverse, what's some of my background, what's some of my experience throughout my career. This is recent. We just finished up the Tellmas survey, so all we know so far is how we've done in terms of taking it, in terms of our participation. And that's pretty high participation across the district, 88.5%. I mean, look at Burchland, 100%. Not sure exactly what kind of motivation Mr. Allen was using over there. But our percentages are pretty high across the district, pretty impressive. You have to be above 50% in order to get the results. And we will get results on not only the district, but each of our buildings, which is very valuable. When we get that, most likely that's going to be somewhere in early June, maybe late May.
I actually checked it. We're actually one of the highest turnouts for this, in the state.
Yes. That's impressive.
That is really impressive.
Is that anonymous?
It's anonymous, yeah. However, what I have to say is impressive is beyond the coaxing and the reminders coming from the leadership team, I think in each of the buildings, there were staff members who started to really promote and say, hey, we should be a leader in this and make sure we get these results. We shouldn't just be working for 50%. And so you see things like the 100% and then the 96% down at the bottom as some of our highs. That's pretty impressive.
It is.
Nice to see.
I can't wait for this next slide.
Now, remember, Mr. Ficero, this is just a snapshot of what we're trying to do. One of the things that with this building of climate and trying to partner is, we want to make sure that our webpage is actually useful for our school community and our community at large. So one of the things I asked Eric Bauer, who is with us tonight, to do is, is there a way we can start to look at the webpage and understand how people are using it? Actually, the initial conversation was as simple as, is there a way we can get a counter on this thing so you know how many people are using it? And so he started to look around and he got into Google Analytics. And so this is just a snapshot of what Google Analytics can do. And I will let him take over and give you an idea of what we're beginning to do with Google Analytics for the East Long Meadow School District webpage.
Right. So graph on the bottom, number of unique visitors per day. Graph on the top is average duration and the number of pages per visit. This is like 1/100 of all of the data that Google is capable of providing to us.
And 20 unique visitors.
Right. And we can look at where they come from across the state, who's accessing it, all sorts of different things. And it's a, something that's in its infancy, a project in its infancy for us, but some of the things that you could do as a district are, might be, let's say you have information that you want to get out, something you want to advertise, or a capital project you want to get people talking about. Put it on the website, we can measure how many people are visiting this. We can, let's say there's something with the health department, we need to get information out. We can see how many people are doing it. Can it replace some of our mailings? Maybe. Depends on how many people access it. Well, now we'll know if the extent to which we can, our website can be more integrated into other goals.
It also is giving us an idea of how we should set up our webpage because you can start to see if you create a live link to what you think is, okay, that's more of the school district webpage, but it's its own standalone webpage, then you actually can see where people are going. Okay, people clicked on the main page and then they went to the page talking about Park. Okay, so people are actually visiting that. If we don't make it, let me know if I'm explaining this correctly, a live standalone, then once they click off the main page, we don't know exactly where they've gone. And so we wouldn't know which links are visited more frequently than others. The other interesting thing is that we have a number of returned visitors from Wisconsin.
Wisconsin?
Wisconsin. Have a couple from California. And Wisconsin, the only, the only thing I can come up with there is I did attend a conference with a few superintendents from Wisconsin, and they were asking us a few different things, so maybe they've checked us out.
So the average person, it looks like usually accesses between one and two pages, is on from around maybe a minute or two minutes, like we can say right now.
And they come out one day Wednesday, right?
That's right.
Yeah. Why is that? We don't know.
Yeah, look at that, you're right.
Or is that Thursday?
Checking out the lunch menu?
The Mountain Dew video.
Yeah, and then this was before the Mountain Dew video went out. So this is just a snapshot in time. We started working with it in early March, and it's giving us more ideas of how to develop the webpage so that it's a little bit more user-friendly. And it was intriguing to see that we have people from out of state actually returning because these were returned visitors to the webpage, not just accidentally hitting it, oh, how did I get to East Long Meadow and then leaving? These were returned visitors. So that's, that's part of continuing to build climate and community. So that's part of continuing to build climate and community.
We don't know who's returning, so we'll capture I.
We don't know.
Google knows who's returning.
Cookies, yeah.
Google knows. Yeah, see, that's what it...
Well, remember, our webpage actually is not housed by Google. It's housed by a different...
Oh, but every hit filters through Google?
Actually, if...
I don't know.
Do you want to just go back?
That's right.
If you're logged in with a Google account, and you visit our page, and you've told Google your age and your job and all of this stuff, I know all of that.
Really? Big brother, it's out there.
I don't know that unless I ask Eric.
Yeah.
But I was intrigued that we were being visited by Wisconsin, California. I don't know if we have gotten any from Alaska.
Anyone can use the Google Analytics?
Free tool.
Free tool, yes. It's on the top.
It's on the top, you can play around with things.
On the top of what?
When you... Because you can see like what's on the search bar or on the list. Like images and shopping.
No, I've played around with it.
It has more.
So we want to make sure that we're utilizing our webpage to the highest degree we can.
It'll be interesting to see where that goes, seriously, because I didn't realize that you could do this with that, you know. I know the technology is there, I didn't know we were doing this, but it's an interesting aspect.
It's interesting what you ask. Simple questions like, can we add a counter?
Yeah.
Ask that of specific people, and then they give you this whole Google Analytics. Thank you. And so then our last district SMART goal has to do with making sure that our resources, most of which is our operational budget, our capital budget, are aligned, so that we're able to effectively meet the district goals and the objectives within the parameters of fiscally responsible budgeting. So with this, we move to the action. Similar to last year, we started to look at not only our timeline for budgeting, but some of the things that we can bring to the process, such as the leadership team meetings and our meetings with school committee, as well as appropriations as we move down into the schedule. Google Docs helped us immensely in terms of sharing and collaborating and creating new forms, so that as we start to establish what are the needs across the district, we can populate a spreadsheet, which ended up in one of the school committee packets a month or two into this process. It helped us figure out what would be clearly identified needs that connect with our goals, connect with our student needs, and yet are still fiscally responsible. And so that's where those budget presentations over the course of January and February came from, and then you take that information into our meetings with appropriations, with the full committee and the full appropriations committee. This is just a snapshot of the top of that form, and Mrs. Olajares was the one who was able to create this form, but so she might be able to give you more insight into it. But basically, this form set you up, so it was something that was sent out to every member of the leadership team, and so it lets you know that, okay, your username, in this case it was me, is Gordon dot Smith at East Long Meadow MA dot GOV. So this then, if I fill this form out, is coming from me and populates in the spreadsheet as an identified need that I have placed in, in this case, a district-wide need. I don't know if there's something that I...
Well, not too much more. I mean, this was my first official Google form, so it was a little bit of a learning experience for me, which was good, and it was much easier than I thought it was. And it really had, you know, kind of structured, it was like just a one-page quick hitter, you know, so had, you could, budget requests could have come from any of different categories, personnel or supplies, instructional or technology, and like Mr. Smith said, it became part of, fed into a spreadsheet, which then we discussed at the leadership meeting and in your budget packet. So it was very helpful and really pretty easy.
And if you remember, it breaks down for the person who's filling this out, what kind of, how are you prioritizing this in the overall scheme of things? And so that's very important, obviously, as we get into these budget discussions. This just gives you an idea that that process is outlined in the action planning chart. It generates itself into a meeting of using the leadership team, and now for those meetings, we outline, okay, what are we trying to accomplish just in this meeting, and where are we going as we develop this budget? So we try to make that as structured a process as possible, and make sure that everybody's clear as to what we're trying to accomplish within each meeting. So bringing us through all the different goals, just some points to sum up. We feel that the district's making good progress on all four SMART goals. We're also, as we know, they are aligned within the buildings, the buildings are making good progress on their SMART goals. It makes it easier for all of us to collaborate with that alignment that we have between district SMART goals and building SMART goals. And for that matter, the building SMART goals are aligned to the teacher SMART goals that get discussed in different conferences with teachers. Students are making adequate progress, progress, excuse me, to meet or exceed benchmarks by the end of the year. We didn't fill a lot of graphs right now with, say, star assessment, we saw some of the open response. At the end of the year, we will, because we want to make sure that we've met or exceeded the benchmarks that we established in those action plans, the SMART goals, and so that will be in June. And probably most importantly, you can't do all of this unless you continue to build a culture of collaboration. And one of the biggest pluses that happened for us this year, and it was something that we discussed and then decided upon in the summer, was, okay, we're going to move to a Google platform, and that really has made a great deal of difference, making it easier to collaborate. You don't necessarily have to be in the same room to be collaborating with someone using the Google platform. Any questions?
Are we all done?
Yes. Clear up my question. There was. Thank you.
Congratulations to Dr. Flanagan.
It's weird hearing that. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. May take us just a moment to get lights back on and...
Hey, how about a three-minute recess? Moved, I, Mr. Fratton, seconded, all's in favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're back, thank you. We have, next item on the agenda is a field trip request.
Yes, this actually is an update. We've been looking at and getting information about a robotics team going to the world championships that are held out in Anaheim, California. That'll happen this coming April vacation. And we now have our final group, seven students who have qualified, and so this is just putting the final details on that trip.
Okay.
I move that we approve the robotic, I'm sorry.
No, please.
I have a motion, right? I move that we approve the robotics field trip, April 23, April 26, 2014, for the world championship in Anaheim, California.
Motion made, and seconded, any discussion? Hearing not all's...
I was going to say, hope they do well.
Yes, we do hope they do well.
We had mentioned that we'd like to maybe have them combine some point...
Show us what they've done, yeah.
We see if possibly, assuming they're prepping to go, so maybe that would be a good time to get them in in one of our April meetings before they go. If that doesn't work for them, we can get them after.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
So all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye, those opposed, no. Motion carries five to zero.
Budget update. Okay, in your packets, as we continue to work toward the budget parameter of a 1% increase that we've been discussing with the appropriations committee, there is a spreadsheet that details how we can reduce by roughly $446,000, $446,000,000 in order to get that 1% increase. And basically, that would bring us to a budget for our bottom line number, am I reading it correctly here, $23,124?
No, no. It's farther down.
Twenty-seven, okay, thank you.
Terry, this doesn't break out the 266.8, other than just in that one spot? That's all it requires? You have the...
Well, there's two pages.
Oh.
The second page is what's called the operational budget.
Yep, that's the one.
First page is just personnel.
And this will be submitting to the town accountant and appropriations?
Yes.
That's the plan?
This will be a breakdown. This is actually their spreadsheet that they provide us, town accountant provides us. And so we, to date, we have given them a look at level services, identified needs, and at least the identified difference between level services and a 1% increase. This takes it actually all the way down to the 1% budget parameter.
Now, this vote doesn't permanently hold us to anything, correct?
I would say that this vote would be to approve the document as stated, based on the request of the appropriations to meet a 1% parameter, and that if future funds become available, all bets are off.
Okay.
But a better way than that, I suppose.
I understand.
But I think we could, we certainly make that clear, because we've asked to make, meet the 1%. We are doing so, will mean some cuts, and we, you know, talk about where those may come from, and so we're fulfilling their request. So with that, we probably should have some sort of a motion, I would imagine.
You need to vote on the...
Make a motion that we put forward for 2014, 2015.
FY215.
FY215 budget, school department budget, at $27,417,965.
I'll second that. Okay, motion made, and seconded, any other discussion? Hearing not all's in favor, please say aye. Aye, those opposed, no. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. School choice.
Traditionally, in March, we discuss school choice. By law, we're actually, every year, as a school committee, need to look at whether we are going to participate in the state school choice program or not participate. The meeting with the leadership team did give you a look at how you possibly could do school choice, if it was something that the school committee wanted to look in, look into, given that it gave you enrollment information across the district. But as we've discussed at other years, when you look at the school choice program, there are certainly benefits, and then there are also some cons to possibly participating in that program. But it is something that we should bring to a discussion, and we traditionally do it in March.
Any other discussion?
If I'm crocked, the motion has to be in the affirmative.
It does.
So I move that East Long Meadow Public Schools participates in the school choice program for 2014, 2015.
Motion made.
Second.
And seconded, and just a reminder, a vote in the, for the affirmative would approve school choice, a vote of no would be a vote to not allow school choice, okay? So all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. No, motion fails, zero to five. Mid-cycle review.
Okay, actually, in connection with the district mid-cycle review, which you just saw a few minutes ago, and the leadership team was helping present, this actually is the superintendent's mid-cycle review, which is similar to what all of our principals, assistant principals, and teachers are going through at this time of year, where we take a look at the individual goals and see how are we doing with those goals and that action plan, and should we be changing anything as we are at the mid-cycle point, where you actually can make changes and hopefully have some positive benefit from those changes. In the Dropbox for the school committee, I've provided a blank template for all of you, so that you can fill out this form, and then, I don't know when you might want it submitted to you as chair, and then it can be compiled into one form for the mid-cycle as a compilation. Also in the Dropbox, you'll see the folder similar to last year, so that you have all four standards, and I will populate each of those folders with evidence, so that you have some tangible evidence you can look at in terms of, okay, standard one, educational leadership, what are some of the examples that can be brought to the discussion with that? Some of that's outlined, I certainly can read this thoroughly to you if you would like me to do that, or I can let you, I can just point out certain highlights.
What do you have it titled as in Dropbox?
It's called mid-cycle 2014.
I will see.
Go all the way back, go back one more.
Mid-cycle formative review?
Yes, because it is a formative review.
Yeah, but when I go back, it's saying 2013 to 14.
I've got 2000, I've got this here.
Is that the one I want?
But this is what comes up.
But that's last year's, isn't it?
See if I go back, whoops.
Should say mid-cycle 2014 formative review, that's the one right there.
Yeah, but then I, then this is what opens up.
I'm so used to budget that I'm looking good.
That's it.
Next, this is it, 2013?
So I got it, okay.
In the folder, you have a template for your use. You have a copy of this that was in your, in your packet. You also have the rubric for administrators, and then if you go into each folder marked standard one, standard two, standard three, it will start to give you the evidence.
Yeah, look at that.
You're doing a good job, you put a lot in there.
Yeah. I...
What'd you say?
Mr. Fratton is commenting on the amount of evidence that I brought to the folder. I think he was saying, wow, what an impressive job. I have not populated evidence in the final two folders. I think I've begun in standard three, and I have to do standard four for you, so I will do that. What I've been trying to do is, as I reported out in the self-assessment, try to give you as much of that evidence, you know, tangible evidence as I can.
All right, so we're actually going to need hard copies of this, right?
Well, you have a copy that you can print there, but I can put a hard copy...
Yeah, why, I'm not going to, I can't.
Yep, I can put a hard copy in each of your...
Yeah, I can print that.
You used a copy here, right?
Yes, I did.
Okay, I see, we need just, okay.
But is, am I nothing, a PDF or is this a PDF that we can't type in?
We can't type in this?
I think it's a Word document.
One's a Word document.
Yeah, I think one's a Word, so you can, yeah. So you can type into it.
Okay.
I don't know how, though. Oh, wait a minute.
If you want to, the ingenuity of the superintendent, if you want to put that into the formative assessment, and that I did give you a Word document...
I'll take a hard copy.
Okay. Although it is a Word document in which you can type, I will certainly give all of you a hard copy. Just to give you a quick idea of how this is set up, you have, it is a formative assessment, so that if there were things that we felt, okay, we should probably change the action plan on this goal, or maybe that's not the goal that we should be acting upon, we can make those changes. It gives you really some highlights as to, similar to the mid-cycle review for the district, as to what I've been concentrating my time on throughout the district. One of the things, and there's no way that I would be able to get here on my own, but because of this leadership team and because of this district, and really because of all of you, I think we continue to be at the exemplary, exemplary level of instructional leadership. A lot of the work we're doing, we share immediately, just because we learned that in kindergarten, that sharing is good, but, and the districts in the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative use a lot of the work that we're doing. Now, to that end, we also use some of the things that other districts are doing as well, but I think that's not only an exceptional collaborative, I think this district does a really good job of moving through some of the unfunded mandates, if you will, that come from the state, and figuring out, okay, how do we implement this, and how do we make it make sense for the entire teaching staff, instructional staff, staff in general throughout the schools? So as you look at ed leadership, those are some of the things that I've brought to the, to the examples and evidence. Management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture are the other standards. I won't go through each of the evidence pieces there, and I will try to be brief and... And I'm always open to questions or phone calls. If something doesn't make sense in the folder, please let me know and I'll be able to walk you through it.
You just don't want us doing them on the 1st. That's not good. April 1st, of course.
Right, yeah. Avoid that, so no April fools here.
Okay, we're going to table 7.3 tonight and we're going to move forward with the recognition of a donation from Berkshire Bank.
Yeah, that's really neat.
So this, it is, to echo the comments that were just made, it is very neat. Mr. Fredette, principal of Maple Shade, saw a community grant that is out of Berkshire Bank. He has been looking to expand STEM, science and technology and math opportunities for students, specifically possibly some of the robotics units. And so he applied for this grant and he got it. And he's been working not only with the folks at Berkshire Bank, he's been working with the folks at Children at Play who do some of our after-school programming and trying to get them to offer certain STEM classes, not necessarily all year, but units, if you will, so that students who might not be enrolled in Children at Play can sign up for those as well, so their enrollment may swell during that unit and then go back to their regular enrollment after that unit's done. So he's done some great work in trying to make this happen and this is just a formal acceptance that Berkshire Bank is giving a grant of $1,000 to support this process to Maple Shade.
Okay. So we have a motion to accept, do we need to accept?
Do you need to accept the recognition?
Yep. Yeah, we do, we still need to accept the donation.
So I, oh, make a motion to accept the $1,000 donation from Berkshire Bank to support the Maple Shade STEM program.
Second. Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing not all, as a favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Eighth grade field trip to High Meadows, same as every year?
Yes, it is. This is their end-of-the-year celebratory field trip to High Meadows.
Meets all our requirements and we've got the information we need.
You have it in your packet, you have not only a cover memo from Dr. Allen, but then you have a breakdown from Mrs. Byankini of the trip.
Questions? Do we have a motion?
It's a full day, right?
Full day, yeah.
I move that we approve the Burscham Park eighth grade field trip to High Meadows, Grand Bear, Connecticut on June 6th, 2014.
Motion made and seconded by Mrs. Mayhew. Any other discussion? Hearing not all, as a favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Last one, fourth grade field trip.
Okay, this is a fourth grade field trip heading to the Connecticut Science Museum. And actually, I believe the date has changed, it just changed today, so they must have had some complication either with transportation or something at the science museum. They are going to be going on the 15th of May, not the 2nd. So we just received that change up today. But it's all the fourth grade, so that's roughly all the fourth grade at Mountain View, and it's roughly 93 students. You have 13 adults going. In Mrs. Antonella's letter, you have enclosed some of the standards that are covered as they go through the science museum, starting with energy and electrical energy, magnetic energy, going into states of matter and so forth. I believe it's roughly, I think it's over $20. It's a costly trip, $20 per student to go, but they have done it in the past and it seems to be quite a successful trip and enjoyable trip. PTO does help, so, you know, I think they have a way of making sure that all students can go.
I am, we accept the information and allow for the Mountain View fourth grade field trip to the Connecticut Science Museum, Harper, Connecticut on May 15th, 2014.
Excellent. Second. Motion made and seconded, any other discussion? Hearing not all, as a favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you and good night.
I'm beating Mr. Thompson.